We're good.
Okay, now you're gonna holler at me. Call to order, roll call, please.
Oh, me, what?
Here.
Here.
Michael Huco.
Yeah.
President, seating of alternates. Michael Huco will take over for Matt Windorf. Any addendums to the agenda, please?
Not at this time, no.
Citizens comments on any items not subject to this public hearing, which isn't any.
Somebody's coming.
Ed Grandowski, Upper Maple Street. I am so offended coming here tonight. I walk in and the doors are locked. That's a kick in my face. I don't care, it's a public meeting, people don't know. This sucks. So I walk halfway over to the auditorium, to the, to the meeting house here, the meeting room, and I know John's gonna be here. And do you see what this is? I hope this is our TV, I hope they see what that is, okay? He needs to have access through the handicap door. The janitors don't know how to open the handicap door tonight. Finally, they figured it out and there's a block in, in, in there to do it. How do you, how, how is that treating the public? This is totally, we have professionals all over the place that I keep getting told, leave it to the professionals, leave it to the professionals. So, then the other thing about this meeting. This Wyndham Energy Center. This letter dated November 5th. Deciding Council doesn't accept the application. If deciding council doesn't accept the application from so-called professionals, how are we supposed to take the information that's here? Now, if they come, they have, they have extra time to bring all this information forward, whatever it is. Now, we're gonna have to go through it again because a tidbit, if there's a tidbit in this thing that they change because the Siding Council wants it. All this has to happen again. And we are volunteers. And I don't like my time being wasted. I put a lot of time into the town to get stuff right. And nobody really cares as to what's going on and for the best interests of the town. Thank you.
Mr. Slater, could you address that issue, please?
The issue about having to do it again?
The issue about why we need to continue the meeting.
Sure. So, the statutory process is going. The Siding Council, there's technical deficiencies that they determine something is incomplete. I believe they need a release, I might not be using the correct term, but the, the prior applicant regarding this site. But the deadline, they, they have a deadline in their calendar of when they're gonna issue a decision. So if, if the applicant finishes up the little details of whatever sort of thing to make the complete application, then the Siding Council will go forward on that date. Meanwhile, the statute that applies to your commissions simply provides for a, a window of time from the filing of the application. Not a determination that it's been complete, but simply a filing of the application. You have an opportunity to issue orders and to record those on the land records. That's your opportunity like you did with the prior application so that you can note where there are any violations of the zoning regulations, where you believe the applicant hasn't demonstrated, you have a concern and you believe that additional analysis needs to be done. Whatever either of the commissions determine, you have a statutory window of 65 days from the filing, which is October 11th, in order for you to do that. If you do not take advantage of it, that time go, is gone. There's no procedure for having to come back and do it again. If, you know, the, the, the details that need to be filed with the Siding Council for it to determine that it's complete for its purposes is separate and apart from your deadlines, which are running right now. And so you have an opportunity and the Siding Council can take your concerns in consideration when and if it acts, if you take advantage of the procedure under 16-50X and you issue orders. If you issue orders, they get recorded and those can be appealed to the Siding Council, but that's your one and only opportunity, is the 65 days that are running since October 11th. So that's the reason why we recommend that you, if you want to be heard by the Siding Council of any concerns that you might have in your regulations or non-compliance, that you go ahead and do that within the statutory window to do so. Is that covered?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Bob.
Because this is not a public hearing, you have latitude. If you wanted to allow folks to comment during the initial session right now and you wish to do that, you can do that. Because there really is no right to be heard anyway, it's really your discretion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Bob.
Thank you. My name is John Lovell. 57 Island Road, Davil, Connecticut. I know most of the people on the board here, but I don't know who these people are. Could you please introduce them? Would you please introduce yourselves?
I'm sorry.
This is the public comment session, not the applicant, you haven't even reached the agenda yet. So if somebody wants to comment.
No, we're saying we can, you go ahead because we already speak to it.
I'm sorry.
I was trying to get the attention so I can, echoing, you're echoing so I can't understand you. So, I'm trying to get the sound to get. I was gonna do this after the comment.
How about if I speak this way?
If you want, I'll go open it up. Okay, go ahead and open it. Bob, why don't you hold on a minute? We gotta let the wetlands open up, so.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Killingley Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Commission. The sole purpose of the Wetlands Commission meeting this evening is for review and discussion of the Connecticut Siding Council application from Wyndham Energy Center. And could we please have our roll call?
Amy Sterling. Paul Archer.
Here.
Rodney Golden.
Here.
Sandy Eggers.
Here.
And Chris McDonald and Corinna Torrey are absent with notification.
Okay, so with two of our regular members absent, Amy will be acting as a full regular voting member for any action that needs to be done this evening. All right. This way, any, any comments are also in our record as well. And I think it's important that we have the opportunity to have access to them during our discussions. Thank you.
So Bob, why don't, why don't we, for procedure? John Robert, we call him Bob, he's a cousin. Why don't you just have a seat for a minute so that we can procedurally, we'll get through the next section and then we'll open up the Connecticut Siding Council on this, this whole application. Just, you know, it's a little discombobulated to put it in short terms. Anybody else wanna speak to anything else? Already on the agenda tonight, how's that? Doesn't appear so. Okay. Public comment can be made in person or submitted by 2:00 PM on the day of the meeting via email at publiccomment@killingleyct.gov. Mail to the Town of Killingley Planning Development Office, 172 Main Street, Killenley, Connecticut, 06239. Import in Dropbox on the side of the Town Hall. Public comments will be posted on the town's website, www.killinglyct.gov. All right, we don't need commission responses. Number six, Connecticut Siding Council Application Review Discussion. This is a joint public information meeting between the Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission. Both commissions will hear the application tonight and schedule separate meetings. Inland Wetlands will be Monday, December 2nd at 7:00 PM at its regular meeting at the Town Hall, second floor, meeting room, 172 Main Street. PNZ, Wednesday, November 20th at 7:00 PM at the Killingley Public Library Community Room, 25 Lescott Road, Killingley, to prepare orders of regulations and restrictions for the following Connecticut Siding Council application. Connecticut Siding Council application, number 241338, Wyndham Energy Center, Gerald Irwin, Senior Landowner, 189 Lake Road, GIS MAP 83 Lot 6, 63 acres, rural development to develop a 325-megawatt battery storage system and related electric interconnection switch-out on a 20-acre portion of the larger 63-acre parcel. Public meeting and scheduled workshop at the library to prepare for the town's orders of regulations and restrictions. So we're gonna introduce, any C E O that can do their presentation? Yeah, was that? Correct. Okay. This will be, any C E now speaking and making their presentation? EC. You can correct me, okay? For the record. And, and would you please introduce your staff?
Sure. Good evening, and first of all, my name's Ken Baldwin. I'm a lawyer with Robinson &amp; Cole. And I represent Wyndham Energy Center in the proposal that's currently pending before the Connecticut Siding Council for the battery storage facility that we're gonna spend some time speaking with you about tonight. First of all, on behalf of Wyndham Energy Center, thank you for putting this meeting together so quickly. As your attorney stated, some of the Siding Council deadlines can get a little onerous at times, but we appreciate you acting quickly and putting this public meeting together so that we can discuss initially the project details with you and hopefully answer any questions that you might have as you go into your deliberations to develop the regulate and restrict orders that the statute allows you to, to do. So again, quickly, the applicant before the Siding Council is Wyndham Energy Center LLC. Wyndham Energy Center is a wholly owned subsidiary of SV Renewables LLC. SV Renewables is a sub of Sunflower Investments Limited. Tonight, we have with us Jonathan Millie, who is a representative of Sunflower Renewables and Wyndham Energy Center. Lynn Griesock with Haley &amp; Aldridge. Lynn is here tonight to talk about the environmental elements of the project. And then last is Clint Page with FlexGen, here to talk to you about and answer any questions you might have about the battery equipment and safety aspects related with that equipment. Again, quick overview, as stated in the call, the project site at 189 Lake Road here in Killingley. The battery storage project is designed to occupy about a 20-acre portion of the larger 63-acre parcel. It's a 325-megawatt battery energy storage facility that will connect directly to EverSource's 345 KV line, which runs adjacent to the parcel to the, to the north and northeast and eventually tying into EverSource's Cotton Bridge Substation. So again, because this is a battery storage facility, like energies, energy generation facilities, this facility is under the exclusive jurisdiction of the Connecticut Siding Council. The application was filed at the beginning of October with the Siding Council. And let me address the completeness review that's been raised this evening. The completeness review that the council made the decision on last week relates nothing, has nothing to do with the technical information that was provided to the Siding Council on this project. What it relates to and what the Siding Council had a concern about was the fact that currently, they have a certificate that has been approved for the development of the NTE power generating facility on the same property. Many of you are very aware of that project, that prior project. We have presented in our application to the Siding Council for this project a number of reasons, which we're happy to talk about tonight, as to why that project should be deemed nonexistent. And the council should be comfortable voiding that certificate for the reasons that we discussed in the application. Originally, we thought the Siding Council might be willing to take those issues up as a part of their review of our application. Based on their decision last week, they wanna resolve that issue first. So they've given us additional time to address those issues and we plan on filing this week's notices and a motion with the Siding Council that would essentially open the prior proceeding for the limited purpose of addressing where NTE is now. And we think we've put a compelling case together, and again, I'm happy to touch on those points, a compelling case together as to why that project will not go forward. Maybe I'll just touch on those briefly. NTE as an entity doesn't exist anymore. They've, they've already relinquished their rights to do business here in the state of Connecticut, as well as their overall LLC certificate with the state of Delaware. NTE doesn't have any interest in the property any longer. They used to have rights to the sorrel property, now the Irwin property. They don't have those rights anymore. Wyndham Energy Center has those rights to the property. We have option agreements in place now that give us absolute rights to the real estate. Wyndham Energy Center, if you recall from the prior proceeding, had to go through a process to get a CSO, a capacity supply obligation that would allow the power that was generated at, at NTE's facility to be sold to the, to the grid. That CSO was terminated by ISO New England. Similarly, there was an interconnection agreement that was in place for NTE's project that has also been terminated. So when you put together all of those pieces, it's pretty clear that the NTE project has no opportunity to go forward. The only thing holding us up is the fact that the Siding Council's certificate is still valid based on the fact that, that the timing of their decision, the timing of the appeals, if you recall, that took it all the way up to the Supreme Court, that, that decision is technically still valid until September of 2026. We are gonna ask the Siding Council to basically find, based on the evidence that we talked about and will spell out more clearly in our motion, that that certificate is for all intents and purposes void. Once that procedural issue is resolved, this, we have every reason to believe that this project will move forward. So again, we appreciate you moving forward on this application to develop your regulate and restrict orders tonight. Siding Council, as you may recall from prior proceedings, has by statute 180 days to render a decision on certificate applications like this one. They can take additional time, depending upon the complexity. It's possible they could take up to another 180 days, so it could go as long as a year as a part of the application process, and that's from the date that the application was filed. But again, as you know, the statute allows this, these two, you two commissions, the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Commission, to develop, regulate, and restrict orders and make those recommendations known to the Siding Council. The Siding Council, as a part of their process, will take those orders into consideration when they review the application. And if they choose to approve the application, they can also choose to adopt your recommendations as conditions of that approval. If we have concerns about some of your recommendations, we have the right to appeal those recommendations to the Siding Council, and the Siding Council can override local orders. Sure. We would appeal to the Siding Council. Yeah, that, that appeal would be filed with the Siding Council. So you would submit your orders. If we have a concern with any of them, we would appeal to the Siding Council. Ultimately, they'll make a decision as to whether they will grant our appeal or not. The difference is that in order for them to override a local commission's order, they need to do it by affirmative vote of six of nine members, not just a simple majority. So it's a higher standard if, if there are orders that we object to. But that's, that's kinda how that process goes, so I just did wanna add that in. We have, again, you've got 65 days in order to make those recommendations to the Siding Council. Based on the schedule, that hasn't been established yet because of this recent glitch regarding the NTE certificate, we're hoping that we might have a decision from the Siding Council sometime late spring, maybe early summer of 2025. But more importantly, the thing we wanna spend some time talking to you about tonight is what the Siding Council has to do in order to make its determination. And it's the same for any application that the Siding Council reviews. They need to balance the public benefit or the need for the proposed facility against the environmental effects. And if they determine that, that the public benefit or the need outweighs the environmental effects, then they typically approve an application. And if the opposite occurs, that gives them reason to deny the application. So we've got two folks with us tonight. I mentioned Jonathan Millie and Lynn Griesock. We're gonna touch on those two aspects for you and start with public benefit and need. I'm gonna ask Jonathan to, to stand up and talk to you about those aspects of the project.
Thank you. Again, I'm, I'm Jonathan Millie with, with Wyndham. I like to, I always like to start thinking about this in terms of, the reason we're at this juncture at all is because of air, clean air, not necessarily electricity. Connecticut has been a leader in, in improving the emissions, essentially reducing air pollution for, for several decades. And this is one step in that, that overall process. Batteries are critical in that, in that, that effort. Storage itself is an old concept. The oldest storage facility in the country is at Candlewood Lake in Connecticut, in New Milford. It's, it's something that's been applied in the grid for, for quite some time. It just is hydro storage as opposed to electrical battery storage, but the use of it is, is the same. Batteries charge at a low price and then they will inject back into the grid when the, when the price is higher. And it will have a, it will mitigate the, the overall cost in the system at that high price point. It will, it will tend to depress prices and, and, and keep grid prices at the lowest that they can be, given the resources that are on them, on the grid at the time. In this case, this location in Killingley is, is ideally situated between two very, very low sources of, low-priced sources of energy, Millstone and Brayton Point. Millstone, of course, is the nuclear facility. And Brayton Point is where a good portion of the, of the offshore wind that's being developed in New England will be injected into the grid. And it's, the, the reason those price points are low is because it's, it's on the, this location is on the 345 KV transmission system. And the energy from those two, from those two sources, in Millstone and Brayton Point, will arrive here with very, very little congestion and be at, relatively at the lowest price in, in New England. So charging at that low price is an advantage to maintain the prices as low as possible throughout the grid, throughout New England, but certainly in, in Connecticut, at this, at this location. The other thing about, the thing about batteries, what's different between batteries and pumped hydro at Candlewood is, is the, is the speed with which batteries can operate. They cycle very, very quickly. They don't need to, they don't need to be kept running, sort of in reserve. It's on off, it's binomial. They, they turn on, they shut off. Traditionally, the, the use of storage at peaking periods of the day or for grid stability, and I recall that, that electricity is the only commodity that has to be utilized the minute that it's produced. To stabilize the supply and the demand of energy in the grid, the, the traditional way of doing it is with, for instance, the steam turbines at Monphil down the river. That steam turbine might be called on because it takes so long to start it. It might be called on a day or two before its, its need is anticipated. And all that time, it's burning coal or oil or gas or whatever it's using to, to boil the water. It's, it has, it has to be paid for. And then when it's, when the grid needs that kind of a resource, it will call on the steam turbine to come up or come down, depending on what the grid needs. And batteries will eliminate that, that out of merit, that need to run those, those resources for long periods of time when they're not otherwise needed. Because when the grid does need them, it needs it immediately and therefore it has to be ready to go. So it will eliminate those, those kinds of resources from the grid entirely. It also, the nature of, the nature of, of energy supply now with solar and, and wind resources, batteries are much, much better suited to complement the clouds coming over and the, the solar generation ebbing and flowing slightly. Same with the wind. Batteries can react faster. They are in nanosecond, it's signal time, it's extremely fast. And they can, so with that reaction time, they're better able to balance those resources on the grid. And, and it's also less expensive because when the battery's not needed, it's, it's, it's just not, you know, it's not running for that period of time. ISO New England has certainly, has certainly promoted the use of, of batteries. It's key to their, to their, you know, their, their future grid plans to, to incorporate the, the more and more use of, of batteries. This utility scale battery will help the utilities. Most of the solar that you see are, is, is rooftop. It's at the utility level. It's something that, that ISO New England doesn't see directly to get manage the, the solar panels on the roof of your houses. But collectively, within the utility, that variation is, is much, much better managed with, with a battery like, like the one we're proposing at, here in Killingley. So ISO New England has, has, is, is, you know, promoting the use of them and, and, and calling for the increased installation of batteries across the grid. The air, the, the legislation in Connecticut is certainly favorable to this, you know, this, this new paradigm. There is currently a DEP procurement effort ongoing for battery storage. It's still open, it's still in process. They are actively seeking more battery resources in the state to complement the offshore wind, to complement the, the, you know, solar facilities that they're, they've already procured. So there is a very, very active, proactive move in the state to, to promote the So there is a very, very active, proactive move in the state to, to promote the use of, of battery storage. In this case, what's interesting is this, this particular project is being developed without regard, at this juncture anyway, to, to turn it kind of a public proceeding. This is, this is going forward based on the, the revenue projections from, from ISO New England, from the grid. So this will be revenue that will be generated simply by, by dispatching for capacity and energy and, and frequency control, ancillary services, they call it, into the New England grid at large. So it is not something that will be done on a contract with, with Eversource or with, with the local utility at this point in time. It's just being done by the physical market revenue from, from ISO New England.
I'm Lynn Griesock from Hayley and Aldrich, the lead environmental consultant for the project. This particular slide shows the location of the Wyndham Energy Center project, which is proposed to be located on a 20-acre project area within a 63-acre overall property. I think you're probably pretty familiar with this area, but you can see the Quinne Bog River on one side with the Wyndham Land Trust parcel in between the river and the project property. The Wyndham Land Trust access road is, is to the southwest of the property with Lake Road to the south, and you can see the existing Eversource Electric right-of-way to the east. And as you know, the, this property is rural development district, and the industrial district on the other side of Lake Road starts just on the other side of the Eversource right-of-way, whereas on the north side of Lake Road, it's about a half a mile. Alexander Lake is also a feature in the area, but located to the south, also, south and east, also about almost half a mile, and separated from the project area by, as you can see, some industrial development. This drawing gives you an indication of where the various project-related elements are proposed. The battery, energy, storage system units themselves are on the west side. You'll see a little bit more about those when Clint gets up to speak to take, give you a look at what those particular units look like. There's a smaller square immediately to the west, which is the project substation, and that is where the voltage gets adjusted so that when it comes off of the 345 kilovolt system, it can be reduced in voltage to store in the batteries. And when it needs to go back into the system, that project substation also can adjust the voltage up to be able to contribute it back. You can also see on this drawing the larger square that is furthest to the east. That is the Eversource Switching Station. This is something that will actually be owned and permitted by Eversource. What we've done in this particular application, because it's obviously very related to this facility, even though it is not proposed by Wyndham Energy Center per se, we've done our best to show the location, show likely design, and discuss relevant and general impacts associated with that so that, so that everybody has an opportunity to consider the impacts overall for the project. You can see that by placing the electrical infrastructure next to the electrical infrastructure that already exists in the, in the transmission right-of-way is a great way to design the facility because that means that there is no need for an, an additional off-site electrical interconnection. Basically, everything is compact, even the Eversource portions of the project all fit within that 20-acre project area. There've been a lot of investigations that have been completed for the project to date, a lot of documentation in the application, and all of that has really helped in terms of guiding how to optimize the equipment placement and the design of the project. The project will be set back from Lake Road by 75 feet to preserve vegetation and visual, and provide visual screening. It will also be keeping the stone wall that's located along Lake Road for community character. But otherwise, the plan was to keep the layout as compactly laid out as possible and as far away from the wetlands and vernal pools on the site as possible. So this does result in the need for no direct wetland impacts. At its, at its shortest distance, there is a buffer of at least 100 feet between the project area and wetlands. In most cases, there is a lot more. The portion of the site that is being used for the project is the same part where there's an existing residence now, so the project is, is compact. The clearing is a little more limited than it would be if it was located on another portion of the site. And by keeping all of it towards the front of the property, that means that there's a large amount of the property that will not be developed, and so it will stay in its, in its current wooded state. That portion of the property that will remain undeveloped is the part that's closest to the Wyndham Land Trust property, and closest to the river as well. Detailed archaeological studies and historic structure studies have been completed, and concurrence has been received from Connecticut's State Historic Preservation Office confirming that there will be no impact to such resources. The project is incorporating appropriate protection measures for listed federal and state species. That includes avoiding tree clearing during June, the months of June and July, which is the, the bat pupping season. And if work at the site happens to be occurring during the time when eastern box turtles are a potential issue, there is a plan to implement a whole series of specific survey and protection measures that have been approved by the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection Wildlife Division. Visual effect for the project will be limited. The battery, energy, storage structures are quite short. They're 10 feet tall. Even if sound walls are incorporated in the project, those are quite short as well, with the tallest potential sound wall 15 feet tall. Some of the electrical infrastructure sticks up a little bit higher, very similar in character to electrical infrastructure that you would, would see in the area. But it's been important to the project to maintain that setback from Lake Road of 75 feet where trees will continue to screen the interior of the project. From most directions, the project should not be visible. Certainly from the east, the Eversource Switching Station is expected to be able to be seen behind the existing electric transmission wires and structures. A noise analysis has also been conducted in order to demonstrate that the project will meet a 51 decibel level at the property boundaries. This has been a very conservative analysis that has been done. It has assumed not only the project as will be initially constructed, but it incorporates all the future augmentation units that will eventually be reflected there, just in order to make sure that the project, for its entire lifetime, will be able to comply with that. So sound from this kind of facility typically comes from fans, comes from the electrical sounds. For this project, low noise equipment has been selected, and as the application states, you know, as necessary based on final design, there are sound walls that are reflected in the analysis that would be installed, and, you know, those provide another degree of, of visual barrier as well. A preliminary stormwater analysis has been conducted. The goal of the stormwater design has been to avoid water quality impacts to the surrounding wetlands, as well as to surface and groundwater resources, to continue contributing flow to sustain the local wetlands and the groundwater, and also to prevent the increase of peak rates of runoff outside of the project area in order to prevent any adverse impacts to surrounding properties. Because there is no off-site electrical interconnection, the electric and magnetic field effect associated with such electrical infrastructure is not a consideration for The construction of the project is expected to occur over an approximately 14-month period in various stages with approximately 40 construction workers at the peak and peak deliveries of about eight to 10 deliveries a day. Work at the site will occur during the day only, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. No evening work is proposed, and no off-site laydown or workspace requirements are identified as needed. The construction, in fact, is planned, is able to be planned and scheduled to deliver the components as they're ready to place on the site in order to avoid the need for double-handling equipment and in order to avoid the need for a lot of equipment and material stockpiling in the area. Obviously, to the extent it's possible, it's to the project's advantage to use as much in the way of local labor and local materials as possible. The project does, prior to construction start, plan to develop a detailed construction management plan, which will be coordinated and shared and implemented in cooperation with the town of Killingley. And when the project is in operation, very little traffic is expected in the area. All of the minimal parking needs that there will be will be accommodated on-site, and there'll be some degree of routine visits to the site because, but because the project will not be staffed on an ongoing basis, there will not even be necessarily daily commuting trips back and forth. So this slide has a lot of words on it, but it summarizes largely a lot of the issues that we've discussed already. But for us, we felt it was important to say some of the same information within the context of some of the key issues we know the Planning and Zoning Commission typically considers in local reviews. You know, so we've talked about pedestrian and vehicular access in addition to what was mentioned in terms of the, the limited construction period and the minimal operational traffic. There is a lot of consideration given to access within the site to make sure that the turning radii are appropriate so that there's good ability to move throughout the site and to access all of the equipment. Noise abatement, we've discussed. Even though the siding council will be approving the project, we have information in the application that speaks to the fact that zoning setbacks and height restrictions that are applicable to the current zoning are able to be met. In terms of neighborhood impact and, and being in harmony with the surrounding uses, the project has worked very hard to minimize its impacts. It is not currently in what is now an industrial area, but it is not too far away from that area. There are very few residences that are in immediate proximity. I know you take a look at the location of churches and schools and public buildings and other places of public gathering, and none of those are in the immediate area. And certainly, the project's plan and desire to have as much visual screening as possible really help to avoid obtrusiveness into, into the community. Landscaping as well, the, the low-profile nature of the equipment and the vegetation screening, storm drainage is, is important. There will not be smoke, odor, gas, dust, vibration. In the application, you'll see that the lighting at the facility will be minimized. There won't be any pole lighting, it will be lighting that will be on the containers. And much of that is only to be turned on if there happens to be a need to access it at night. Obviously, the electrical equipment and other elements of equipment have certain minimal lighting requirements for safety, but the use of downward-facing lights and minimizing lighting effect is important as well. And public safety, certainly the site will be readily accessible, but you'll hear a lot more from FlexGen when they get up about how the project and the design of the equipment integrates a lot of different safety features and that there are a lot of requirements placed on these types of projects and standard procedures that are followed for safety. And WEC will be putting together detailed plans, providing training, and all, all of that as, as is required for these projects. And then taking a look as well, from the perspective of the Inland Wetland and Watercourses Commission, the delineated wetlands are located a little bit up and further into the site. They, all of the battery, energy, storage system units are further than 200 feet from the wetlands. There are a couple of project elements that are within 200 feet, largely some portions of the project substation, one of the gravel access roads, and then likely some of the grading and basins associated with stormwater management systems. You know, you can kind of see that the closest place the wetlands come to the layout is the man-made pond that's at the tip of the eastern lobe of, of Wetland A. And avoiding impacts to wetlands was a, was a very important element of selecting the specific location for where the, the project elements would be. Direct impact can be avoided in that way, and detailed stormwater and erosion and sedimentation control measures will be reflected in the design, consistent with the latest standards in order to minimize the potential for indirect effects as well. And as, as I previously mentioned, maintaining a contribution from the site of clean rain water from the project area is expected to benefit wetlands as, as well as groundwater on the property. This particular slide shows a little bit about some of the project scheduled targets. Ken spoke to the schedules that we're engaged with now, and so I guess, you know, first things first, the project needs to undergo that, complete the consideration that the siding council needs to do with contribution from, from Killingley. And the project site work hopefully will, is planned to be underway early in 2027. Clint from FlexGen is now going to get up and show you a little bit more in the way of detail relative to the battery's system itself and talk to you about safety.
My name is Clint Page, Director of Field Operations and subject matter expert on battery safety for best systems for FlexGen. We'll start with the battery design that we selected for this particular application. These will be CATL battery cells in an inner C-plus containerized solution. The containers themselves are approximately 30 foot long and about 11 and a half foot high, and they are packed with LFP, liquid-cooled battery systems, battery racks. And they are packed with LFP, liquid-cooled battery systems, battery racks. We have our, as we integrate this system and as we connect it up, all of this will be monitored 24/7 by our Remote Operations Center located in Durham, North Carolina. And what we've done, we control the temperature. We control the HVAC settings. We control the liquid-cooled settings. We control all of that. We monitor cell temperatures. We monitor cell voltages. We monitor ambient temperature. We monitor all the fire alarm control systems and all of that stuff in there. The way that these containerized solutions are designed by having a rack solution and being separated is to prevent, if there was a thermal runaway event or anything that happens, it will isolate itself to that particular rack so that it doesn't spread. One of the reasons that we designed it for that, for this particular application. We've tested this with our vendors multiple times. We've tested our power conversion systems to work with this efficiently. When I say liquid-cooled, it's a 50/50 mixture of water and glycol. There's no harm to the environment. There's nothing damaging that's in there. It's just a 50/50 mixture of glycol and water. And the reason for the glycol is to prevent from freezing. We use, we do use, when the fire department and part of the training, and I'm going to let David Johnson speak to some of this, but part of the training that we use is when you have a thermal runaway event or anything that happens like that, your objective there is just to contain it. You're not going to stop it. You're not, you're going to keep it from spreading, and you're not going to stop it. So you might as well just let that, let that energy burn out. The reason for that is, is the people that have to come in and do the investigation and the repair or anything like that, by letting that energy burn out, we've ensured that there is no more stored energy in there. And we can safely remove the damaged part of equipment and put new stuff in there. That's why we do that. So again, we do provide training on all of this, all the way down to the cell levels. We do provide HJ trainings, anything like that. I left a lot in there. This is one of the containerized solutions and what it looks like. As you can see, it's just a bunch of battery cells packed into a, into what we call a module. And then the module is shoved into a rack, and then it multiplies from there. We have the, as you can see, the fire detection system is on there, and we have an expired fire explosion protection as well. Those are separated, and they are isolated from each other. And what that means is the fire detection system, if we get a heat detector or a smoke detector, we receive that alarm. But that alarm that we receive is not directly tied into your extinguishing agent. Your extinguishing agent is located on what they call a fusible link. It has to heat up to a certain degrees before we'll actually detonate and go off to extinguish the fire. And we keep those separate because we don't want false alarms, any rodents or anything chewing through wires that'll cause it to prematurely go off or anything like that. So we keep those completely separate. Again, all this is monitored 24 hours a day. In our monitoring center, we have alarms that are set to trigger, that notify us of any issues whatsoever that go off if one cell, if one cell gets too hot or one cell gets too much voltage, not necessarily heating, but if it does any of that, it shuts itself down. It's designed to self-protect itself, kind of like a fail-open breaker. If it senses anything that's wrong with it, it's going to shut itself down. So the way that these work is, is you have a containerized solution. Inside that containerized solution is what we call the whole battery cabinet. And inside of that, we have battery racks. Each rack is completely separated from the next rack. Inside of those racks, you have approximately 14 modules. And inside of those modules, you have approximately 14 to 24 cells inside the module. It's how those completely break down inside of the batteries. And they're shoved into like a 35-foot container. So as you can see there, the picture on the, on the far is, with the doors open is what the individual racks would look like. They've got the modules in there. As you can see on the top right there, that's what the module looks like. And when you open up the module, that's what the individual cells look like inside of there. Again, each one of those cells and each one of those modules is monitored for voltage, is monitored for thermal, is monitored for any, everything that we have going on inside of there. Fire safety. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. David.
Good evening. David Johnson, Director of Field Services for FlexGen. So I'll start covering all of the fire safety, all the issues that a lot of people want to discuss when we start talking about lithium-ion battery storage systems. So lithium-ion phosphate systems are not like what you would see in a, if you've seen things on the news where you might see a battery fire of some kind of a storage facility or something. So lithium-ion phosphate, to this date, there are no recorded lithium-ion phosphate battery fires in any application of a mass storage facility. So that being said, the type of technology that's being applied in this project is the, I'm going to use the word, the term latest and greatest. But what it is, is it's a more stable technology. Lithium-ion phosphate has a different type of cell chemistry inside at the cell level. What Clint was referring to, these cells are compacted into a module. The module is then built into a rack and so forth and so on. But really, where the technology has to start at is at the cell development level. Because if, how these cells are constructed and with the chemicals that are used, they are actually trying to prevent fires from the start of being built and letting them propagate, or preventing them from propagating, rather. So this is what we're talking about at the cell level. So at the cell level, you've got the cells that are then put together inside of a module. The module is, the cells are then designed to where if, say, a single cell, and to give you, for context and for understanding how big of one of these cells may be, think about half of that binder size. So that, you take that three-ring binder, that three-inch, four-inch binder, cut it in half, that's about the size of one cell. What happens is, is that that cell is then constructed and wrapped with different layers of protection so that it cannot propagate. So that if you have one cell burn out or you have one cell go into a runaway, it would not be able to expand. If it did expand, then we go to the next level. We'll go to the module level. So at the module level, these heavy-duty, that heavy-duty black case that you saw, that case is laser sealed, and it's actually constructive aluminum so that it does not, it will not, it's a higher temperature melting level, right? And if it were to go into a runaway inside of that module, it will actually vent through the middle of that module. You saw the few slides ago where it said it went all through the UL testing, UL 9548. That is a true destructive test, meaning that the UL labs actually put those pieces of equipment to their toughest and roughest levels of basically degradation. They wanted to tear it up on purpose. So what that is, is that tells us, one, in my department, it tells me what's going to happen in the event that we have one of these thermal runaways. But it also tells us, okay, did the manufacturer, did the OEM build that device or build that equipment the way they said they would? And in this case here, with this equipment that they're proposing, they, in fact, did. With all the certifications that were, that were listed, they absolutely did. So at the module level, you've got the heavy-duty cases. You've got the temperature and voltage sensing that Clint was referring to. And then you've got our thermal management system. The thermal management system was what we're referring to as the liquid cooling. So in the battery industry, what we're learning is that with liquid cooling, we get more stable temperatures throughout the battery system. What we've learned about batteries is that they don't like volatile temperatures. They don't like big temperature swings. They don't like to be really hot. They don't like to be really cold. They like to be kind of, kept kind of medium at all times. And with liquid cooling, what we've learned is that that allows us to do that. And it allows us to regulate the temperature inside of these cabinets a whole lot more equal versus a conventional HVAC or a conventional air-circulating system where you would circulate air through a cabinet, but you would always have hot spots and cold spots, just like in your house. You know where your cold spots are and your hot spots are, right? But same thing with the battery cabinet with using a HVAC system. So with the cooling system of a liquid cooling system, the temperatures stay way, let me say, a lot more, let's say, flatline. They don't have big temperature spikes. And the batteries like it a lot better. At the rack level, we've got all of our high-amp fusing, all of our disconnect switching, all of our voltage and current temperatures and monitoring through the controllers. Each rack level is connected into a controller. Each one of those controllers is all connected into our main controller at the end of every cabinet. And at the end of every cabinet, we've actually got a main controlling system that is housed on-site, where we get all of our information from that, like Clint referred to, that is sent to our 24-hour monitoring center 24/7. So at the container level, we've got a redundant HVAC system, flood detection, fire suppression equipment, smoke, temperature, and voltage detection, insulation with one-hour fire retardant doors. If you ever looked at these doors, you know, you might look at them, they're about this thick. They are designed from the build. So for deflag and deflagoration things, they're not designed to create a pipe bomb, in a sense. They're designed to handle any type of, any type of event that were to happen inside of it. So even from the cell level to the module level to the rack level, all the way to the actual container level itself, the goal is to contain anything that were to happen inside of it. It even goes, this CATL plus equipment that they're referring to actually goes a step further. It actually has, in the deflagoration test, the doors will only open up so far. Once they hit a certain PSI, a certain bar inside of them, they will actually only open up so far because they're built that way. So that if it were to go into a thermal runaway event and it did build up pressure inside, you've got two systems. You've got your, your air suppression system that actually releases and releases pressure out of the cabinet itself. And then you've got your, your doors that pop open to prevent it from exploding, essentially. Fire suppression system, Clean Agent FM200 or similar agent helps reduce propagation in the event. You know, you had an issue, you had a, you had a small fire, you had something heating up inside. It's mainly there for suppression efforts. Then you've got what we call automatic mode, which would be triggered, triggered through high levels of smoke and temperature. Includes a 30-second countdown with alarms and strobes. That would only really come into play if you had somebody on-site. These are unmanned sites, 100% unmanned. So where they're completely remotely operated. Whereas once the site is commissioned and we hand it over to the customer, we leave and nobody, you don't have a person there every day. There's no need to have that. It is strictly operated and maintained remotely. From the software side and from the software design, from the integration side, which is what FlexGen is what we are heavy-handed in. So from our software level, from our, our software that we use to control the site, we have the ability to charge, discharge. We monitoring all of our temperatures, monitoring all the, all the equipment on-site, monitoring anything and everything that happens on-site, all the way from the substation down to the lowest cell levels. You have the ability to take what we call manual control of a site. Say that the grid was in an unstable state, say the grid was having an issue. We would have the ability to take control of the site and shut it down remotely as well. Think of an e-stop, more or less. Say something was happening and we didn't like it. We'd be able to shut it down at a moment's notice, and the system would stop operating. So what we really, what we want to finish with is the battery management system. So our BMS or your Energy Management System or EMS. What that is, is that's the system that sits on top of this best site. And what that does is that's going to monitor everything all the way around from your coolant temperatures to your, all of your settings, all your, all your devices that are integrated together, your power conversion system. All the devices are going to communicate up through your battery management system into our Energy Management System, which is going to control and monitor and be utilized in every aspect. Every fault, every alarm, every shutdown, every startup, every type of operation that occurs on-site, we monitor and we oversee it. I didn't realize that was the last line. I apologize.
So that's a lot of information, and we appreciate your patience and listening to what our team had to say. We are here as long as you will have us and happy to answer any questions that the commissions may have or want to send our way.
You know, global warming is making it so that there's less snow. However, sometimes it does snow. And I'm wondering whether that thing that you were just describing has any way of melting the snow off of itself or it's just going to sit there till nature takes care of it?
So what'll happen is that the inside of that cabinet will be a regulated temperature between 70 and 80 degrees at all times. So any snow that collects on top will automatically melt. And that's regulated all the time. We have, inside of the cooling system, we have heating coils that actually heat up the system itself also. So it would not allow, not be allowed to accumulate. We have similar, we have the exact same systems in very cold climates that accumulate snow, and we don't, there's no issues.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Here, the land is contiguous with the Wyndham Land Trust land. Is there, have you planned for extra visual protection? Are you planting trees and shrubs to block the view from the Wyndham Land Trust land on the edge of the river?
Well, Lynn comes up, the only portion that is contiguous, the only portion of the project area contiguous to the Land Trust is that small sliver of land that provides them access to the back.
Oh, just that?
That they use for access to the main portion.
Okay.
And along that access, there's a planned 25-foot setback where the trees are planned to remain. And of course, abutting the Wyndham Land Trust parcel itself, the balance of the 63-acre parcel is wooded and will remain wooded. So there's a lot of good buffering that will occur along that side of the property, for sure.
Excellent. Thank you.
I got a few.
Okay, go ahead.
I got, I got a few questions for you. Can you tell me the distance between the cabinets?
Right now, general layout is between six and eight feet normally.
Six, eight?
Yes, sir. I mean, that would be between, so if the cabinets are facing longways, so, you know, 20 feet this way, 20 feet this way, it would be between six and eight feet between us. And that's simply because the deflagoration study that has to be done, you have to have a minimum of six feet. Normally, they do six to eight so that you can get your modules out of the cabinets.
Now, you've got a camera on the front gate. Remote camera on the front gate.
I'm sorry, you, camera on the front gate?
Yeah. Says here, you've got a so, closed-circuit TV camera will monitor the entrance gate.
Are you asking me?
Well, you've got that.
Right.
And it's, it's a locked gate, right?
Correct.
Is there any other cameras considered for the area?
At this point, I think the thought is that it would be on the entrance gate. But certainly, additional consideration can be given if additional cameras might be appropriate.
So what is going around the whole plant, or whatever you want to call it? Is it a fencing around it?
There is fencing around it, yes.
So anybody, if there's no cameras in back or side, anybody can break in there and you'll, you'll never see them.
Something we will take.
That could be dangerous.
Okay, something we will take into consideration. Thank you.
Is that gate locked?
Yes.
Remotely opened if need be?
I think that it would be, be opened by someone who actually has to gain access to the facility. Remotely open, no.
So you would have possibility of opening it. You would have to be at the gate to open it. And you would provide the fire department access to open that gate?
That's correct. They would have access to the gate.
Okay. There's one area, it's on page 20, I think it was. It talked about water. Let me get to it. But there's possibility of water being used or needed on that in case of, I'm not sure where it is right now. Has there been any consideration of putting a hydrant up there?
Yes, sir. Some of the, some of the CATL containers actually have a dry pipe inside of them that would allow you to hook up. As the NFPA and as the, as all the regulatory commissions do all the testing, they're learning that that actually doesn't do any effect of having a water. You're talking about adding a water hydrant for this site?
No, fire hydrant, a fire hydrant on the site.
Okay. Oh, I don't know about that. I'd be lying to you if I said anything.
In some of our early conversations with the town, with the town manager, we did have an opportunity to speak with the Fire Marshal's Office locally. And there was discussion about finding where the closest hydrant is. about finding where the local, the closest hydrant is and make a determination at that point whether there was need to bring water closer. But I think, if I recall correctly, there was a comment made that, that there was a hydrant close enough by where they didn't think they would need to extend that water line to the property, but that's something we can look into.
Now, there's liquid for cooling and heating inside the cabinets. Is there a containment for that and God forbid something spills?
So in, yeah, inside, if, if, if the, say, say one of the cooling lines bursts inside of the cabinet, it would stay in, the cabinet has its own inside of it, in, in the base. It has, it would all fall onto the base of the cabinet.
And what's the percentage they'll hold, the base hold?
So it, the whole system holds right at 40 gallons and that, that sits, that base is 30 feet by a foot and a half, so it would absolutely hold its, 100% of its, its volume.
110?
I think that's, I think that's the law. It should be 110, right?
Yeah, it should be 110.
I think it'll actually hold a lot more, but that's the idea is that, but there are checks, so just so you are aware that inside of that system, there are check valves located inside of all the cooling lines. So if I lose a check valve or if I lose a line on one set, on one module or I lose a line on one rack, I'm only going to lose the liquid that is contained in there. I'm not going to, it's not going to automatically drain out its entire system. It's also on a pressure loss valve, sir.
Hope, you hope it doesn't.
Hope. Well, I also, I'm also working off a pressure loss, so I have pressure sensors located on that cooling system. So the moment it drops pressure, the pump shuts off. So it would not continue to pump out or circulate.
Now, are you planning on, there's an access road and I see the town engineer already commenting on that. Do you planning a parking area?
Yes, there, there is a small parking area that will be built into the, into the layout.
Where's that going to be?
It's, it's located, I believe it's located just adjacent to the battery energy storage system.
And that's going to be used also for when construction?
During construction, there'll be travel throughout the different areas where construction will occur. So I can well imagine that, certainly there won't be anywhere near 40 people parking there during operations. So during construction, as the different work is staged, the construction workers will park on the site in various locations and sort of move around as the different areas are completed.
They'll be parking, not on the road?
Not, not on the road, no.
Now, you're saying the noise level about 51 decibel right now? The, that during normal operations, you're saying 51 decibel?
51 at the property boundaries when everything in full build-out mode is operating full tilt, yeah.
Has that been tested at any site that exists?
Yes, all, all of the, all of the inputs we have to our model are from real, real facility and real equipment vendors and, and they are actual measured values that we use, yeah.
Now, what's the noise level during construction?
During construction, it will vary according to construction stage, we.
What's an estimate, how high is that noise level going to go?
Yeah, that is not something that was required to have a decibel level assigned to it under your code because your code exempts construction sound. But it's, you know, there are periods of time where there'll be grading and we don't think there will be a need for blasting, but there is some rock that's a little close to the surface. And so that's obviously going to be a little bit louder when there's a lot of machinery on the site. As the stages move to placement of gravel and creation of the, of the pads, that's, that's, it'll come, the concrete will come in ready mix trucks, so there won't be a lot of active mixing on the site. And then as, you know, as, so I, I think the sound levels really are going to be more equipment-based than anything else and will certainly vary in accordance with the different stages over that 14-month period.
Now, you're talking 14 months. Within that, we're talking summertime in the lake, people enjoying the lake and everything and.
Depending on.
It could be noisy too and that's, you know.
And that, and that's one.
Something to consider.
Yeah, and that's definitely one of the reasons the project has made the commitment to only have construction during the day. Because during the day, typically, the, the other ambient sounds that are around are a little bit louder as well. And so a little bit less disruptive to people who are trying to do quiet nighttime activities.
Now, you, you did say there's species that lives in the area and there's vegetation and landscaping there. Is there any consideration if, God forbid, something happens during construction or afterwards and damage or harm gets to the specimen, uh, the species or landscape of replacing it with what exists? Is that, that, you know, is, like, will you replace what exists if, God forbid, something happens?
I mean, the project is committed to having the, the vegetative screening and so I am expecting that there'll be a landscaping plan, obviously preserving what's there is the first priority because it's mature trees, but.
Something goes wrong and something happens and God forbid some landscape and some species get damaged or harmed, are you going to replace what, what is, has been damaged?
I think there's a commitment to keeping a vegetative buffer in order to have that screening and so replacement would be expected to occur in that event. Obviously, it depends on a lot of factors. I, I don't, I don't know how you would replace species and I don't know specifically what you're talking about.
Well, if you have to buy new ones or if you have to get, you know.
Yeah.
You don't want to do away with them.
No, I mean, and you would, you would want any vegetation you were replacing to be similar in character.
Exactly.
You would want it to be native, you would want it to blend in with, 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 with what you would expect to see in the local community for sure.
That's all I got for now.
I, I have a couple of questions if you don't mind, actually to expand on some of the questions that were just asked. I know these batteries have internal storage in case there is a leak. Has there been any consideration to any sort of exterior containment for these, for these batteries?
For external containment, so you're talking for a secondary containment system?
Correct.
Not, not from, not from a FlexGen perspective, I think that it could be discussed, but not from a FlexGen perspective on a secondary containment system.
And you, you may have, you may have seen in the application that in areas where there is oil use on the site, like transformers and the electrical equipment, there will be a, a special membrane installed underneath those that allows, allows water to go through it, but when oil hits it, it kind of gets solid and it prevents the oil from leaching down further. So, so certainly in, in areas where there's oil equipment, that is planned.
The other thing is, I see the delineation that was on the, the set of plans, the wetland delineation. And I was just curious the age of that delineation because it looks very similar to the previous application.
It is, it is very similar to the previous delineation and we did have a wetland scientist go out and confirm those boundaries this year.
Okay, so that is recent?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. And looking at some of these comments from the town engineer, it looks like post-development hydrocath graphs were not provided. And I was just curious, how was the stormwater modeled for post-construction conditions?
The, the stormwater has been preliminary, prelim, I can't even talk, preliminarily evaluated and take, look at the existing watersheds and, and various contributions so that there's a, a sense as to the appropriate size for the basin. And it's certainly something that more work will be done on prior to final design of the dimensions and shape of, of those holding ponds.
Okay, and just to expand on a comment earlier, I was curious if any consideration was given to putting any sort of cistern on the site for fire protection?
There's nothing currently reflected in the design. If a comment is received about that, we'd certainly think about whether that would, that would make sense.
Okay, thank you.
Regarding the box turtles, appreciating your deference to the wildlife, maybe I didn't hear, but will there be protection of the box turtles pre, the existing habitat? I'm sorry, could you say that again?
The box turtles habitat, are you going to protect their, you've identified box turtles, you know where they are, can you protect that area from being disturbed?
So there are specific measures that Connecticut DEEP has recommended in the construction area, which is a limited part of the 63-acre site. Obviously, that habitat will be changed, but if the work is done inside the season that is sensitive for those turtles, there are requirements for having qualified individuals survey to determine whether turtles are present, making sure that there's fencing, silt, silt fencing and such placed around an area that has been confirmed to be cleared of the turtle presence. And, and, you know, ongoing awareness of the species to make sure that any individual that wanders into the area gets, gets moved outside of the work area. There will be, because the, the total work area is 20 acres of the 63-acre site, there'll be a lot of remaining habitat available so that there will still be plenty of potentially suitable habitat for those, those turtles in the area.
Thank you. And who will be getting the monitor, the expert person to guide the protection of the box turtle? You mentioned expertise.
The, so when the, when the project is being constructed, typically there's an engineering, procurement and construction contractor who oversees all of that. They'll, whatever the project has in the way of commitments, like those commitments for species protection measures, will need to be a part of the contract that those, that those constructors know need to be implemented. And WEC will maintain overall responsibility for compliance with the permits, so they'll be watching over the contractor very carefully as well. I expect that the contractor would consult with DEEP with regard to selection of who, who, who might be good in that instance. There are certainly a lot of very qualified wildlife biologists located in Connecticut.
All right, thank you.
You have some additional questions. I'm assuming an area study has already been completed by Eversource. Are there any need for upgrades to the existing infrastructure in and around the site?
Sorry, I didn't hear the, the first part of your question. You said the electrical infrastructure, meaning the Eversource grid?
I'm sorry, what?
I didn't hear the first part of your question.
I'm, I'm assuming that an area study has been completed by Eversource, right?
Oh, yes, yeah, the impact study's been completed and no, there aren't, except for to tie into the 345 line itself, but that's, that's all that's required.
That, that's all that's required? There's no additional upgrades to their existing infrastructure?
No.
Okay.
Just, sorry, just a couple of follow-up questions on clarification, I guess. First one's on the noise. So the noise study, was that with or without the walls installed? It was unclear in your report. Sometimes it said the walls may be installed, sometimes it said they will be installed.
Yep, in, in order to comply, the walls are assumed to be in place. And the only reason there's some question about it is because there might be other mitigation measures that might be able to be employed that could get you to the same levels without the walls.
Okay, but, but so, but the report is, is assuming walls installed?
Yeah, that's right. It is assuming walls. So there's, there's one kind of along the lake roadside that's about 15 feet tall, there's a shorter one along the Wyndham Land Trust access is 14 feet tall, and then a much smaller, shorter one that I think is eight feet tall on the, on the Eversource right-of-way side.
Yep, okay. And while you're there, since you mentioned the augmentation units?
I'm sorry, say again.
You mentioned the augmentation units while you were up there. Can you describe what those are? The ones that are installed three years from now, then again in five years?
The.
Augmentation.
Oh, yeah, sorry. So hard to hear in here.
There is an echo.
These seem like great microphones, but, so originally there'll be an installation and, you know, we all know that batteries will degrade over, over time. And so there's a plan, I think it's at a three-year, three years into the life of the project, and then again at five years into the life of the project, there'll be additional units that get added so that the batteries can, can maintain their 325 megawatts of storage at the same, at the same level. And, and so those augmentation units are reflected in the layout, those were incorporated in terms of the sound associated with those in the noise analysis as well.
Okay, so my question on those then was, so they're to keep you at 100% of your rated capacity, correct?
Yeah.
So are the old modules still good at 50% and they're not pulled and replaced, they're left at 50% capacity?
They operate, they operate the best they can.
Okay.
Yeah, so module replacement will happen between 75 and 80% of degradation. So at between 15 and 20% of degradation of a module, they'll be changed out. These are, I think they're a 15-year battery. So in theory, you should see your early onset of failures in the first year and those modules will be covered under warranty so they'd be swapped out. So the augmentation would happen as it was needed at the three-year and five-year mark. But you're exactly right, the reason why you augment is to be able to maintain your, your rated capacity.
Okay, and during module replacement, is there any, any modules left on-site outside of the racking system?
No.
Or are they taken off the same?
No, they're all, they're all removed offsite. There are no, nothing sitting on-site.
Okay. And while you're there?
Yes, sir.
So fire suppression, just a couple of questions there. So where is the, I guess each rack has its own chiller and heater system installed?
Each, each rack has its own what?
Own chiller and heater system? So own heat exchanger?
Yes, yes, you actually have dual, so on, on this, on this NRC plus is you actually have dual chambered systems, one for each side of the, of the container. So you, they're, and they work independently of each other. And then you have separate fire, fire suppression systems that actually run down each side.
Okay. And if there is a failure of the heating or the cooling system, does that entire rack or this container shut down?
Yes, sir.
So there's no additional heat buildup?
Yes, sir.
Is there any latent heat buildup if there is a shutdown?
No, sir.
No.
No, it can sit, it can sit idle.
Once it's out of line, there's no heat buildup whatsoever?
No, it can sit idle.
Okay. Then you made a, you made a comment about letting, if, if a container does go, basically the, the fires, fire control is to chill the adjacent containers with water and let that unit burn out?
Correct.
What is the burnout time?
So right now, the early, the best, and I'm going to say this, per the UL, UL 9548 experiments, per what we've seen with NMC technology, when they have a, if they, the thermal runaways that have happened in this industry, we've seen anywhere between two to three weeks. That, but that is strictly, that's not our, this technology, that is what's happened with the systems that they have now. There is, being as there has not been a true LFP thermal runaway to that event, it's a, there's a question mark there because there's, it could be a day, it could be a week, it could be, there's no, there's no definite answer and I don't want to lie to you and tell you the exact number.
No, but I'm just trying to understand if there's a planning needed from a fire department standpoint, right? How much water is needed, how, how much time do they need to spend on those other containers?
Correct. So, exactly, so what would happen is in the immediate, in the immediate after effects, what would happen is that we would, the, the AHJ fire departments would respond, immediately start cooling of the cabinets around it. You're exactly right, that's exactly how that happens. The goal is to get it, let it dissipate its energy. And then the SMEs, myself, Clint, a whole team of us, the CATL group, we would be on the way within, you know, 12, 24 hours, we'd be on-site and we would then start our monitoring of temperatures and voltages, mainly temperatures. Once the temperature reaches below 70 degrees Celsius. Once the temperature reaches below 70 degrees Celsius, we'd feel comfortable to then start opening cabinet doors and checking voltages and seeing what—what's the overall damage of the internals is what our goal would be. The goal for the liquid cooling, once it starts—once you notice that that cabinet has stopped, once it has stopped releasing gases, that's a phase, so that's in the earlier phases. Once it stops, and you start noticing that it's not—it's no longer doing that, that does not mean it's necessarily done, but you could essentially stop cooling the cabinets around it.
Right. We just saw that there is no timeframe for that yet.
There is a timeline for that, but I don't know the exact time with the CATL numbers. It's in the UL 9548 test, but I don't know the numbers off the top of my head to tell you exactly what they are. For a single module and for a rack to go into a full thermal runaway, but we do have that information.
Yeah, and your report says that that test was—says it was provided? I mean, we don't have it?
I don't—I—it's in the UL 9548 testing that they did with these containers. I don't have it on me, though.
I'm not sure we got that. I didn't see it in any of the penises. If I did, you can point me in the right direction if I missed it.
We've absolutely got that—we've absolutely got that information to show.
Okay, and that was shared with the fire departments?
It will be. So, I'm the one, myself, Clint, and we have—we're the ones that actually go around and do the AHJ fire department trainings, training sessions, and go through similar information. It's about a four-hour ordeal, where we sit with them and actually go through what to do, what not to do. You know, a fireman's first reaction is, I'm going to go in there and save a life. There's no life to save. You're literally just trying to save equipment from burning up, but at the same time, if it burns up, it'll just get replaced.
Okay.
So, there's no need to, you know, risk harm, no reason to risk a life to go in there and save something that's just going to burn up.
No, I understand. I'm just trying to get to the water supply question.
Oh, correct, correct, correct.
What's required, how much is required.
Absolutely.
Okay. Then, silly question, but what happens if there is a power outage?
What happens if there's a power outage from, say, our supply system from 345?
Your supply coming in with the heating-cooling system shutting down, everything?
So, our system is designed, these batteries can literally sit for months on end and sit idle and be perfectly fine. So, if we were to lose power, the way the system's designed, on all different phases, from the high voltage phase all the way down to the cell-level phase, if we lose any type of power anywhere, we're—we work off of what we call phase loss, so that the moment we see something, we open up all disconnects, we open up everything and shut down. Our first reaction is to shut down versus how do we keep running? That's not our first reaction. The first reaction of our system is, open up, what happened? Why did we shut off? Why did we lose power, wherever we lost power at?
Okay. And one follow-up question on the gases, because I missed that one. What gases are released if there's a burnout, and what specialized concerns are there?
So, the specialized for direct—in for direct contact of any houses or anything downwind, we'd have to get with the AHJs and get with the fire marshal to see. The way the studies have read for the UL testing and whatnot, the—and this is going to sound silly, but the gases that are emitted and the things that are burned off are no more—no different than a normal house fire. That's what's been in the study. That's what's been found in the studies.
Okay, and that's in that other report you said?
That's in the—that's in the actual 855, NFPA 855.
NFPA 855?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you.
No, you're welcome.
Anybody else have something? Any other questions? People are going to try to talk slow, it'll end, but it's hard to hear on both ends.
Is—I'm sorry. Is this being recorded? Do I need to use the mic? Thank you for your presentation. Really appreciate it. I'm going to read part of a report by the International Renewable Energy Agency. If any mechanical impact affects the battery cells and comprises compromises their internal structural integrity, internal short circuit may be induced, leading to a thermal runaway. Electrical hazards, such electrical shock, or flashes can cause serious harm to maintenance workers. Energy storage systems with high voltage above 50 volts can cause serious harm to workers who may be exposed. Electrical flashes can occur. The inherent hazards of battery types are determined by the chemical composition and stability of the active materials. Lithium-ion battery cells vent—they vent combustible gases under normal conditions. I heard somebody say there's no venting, so I'd like this August board to understand just what venting does take place. Lead acid batteries, these are not lead-acid batteries? And in the—in the report that this illustrious company presented in March, it says that before submitted to the State Siting Council, they would meet with certain individuals in the community to review. It also says that the next report would include a fire safety plan, a fire management plan, and how first responders are going to respond. I'd like to know what fire chief you spoke with. They did not speak with any fire chief. That did not happen. I met with the fire chief yesterday, and I went through that binder. His primary concerns are, what are the protocols? How did we respond, et cetera? That was a very good question about power, but what about internet? You're managing this from North Carolina, so they'll be here immediately when something happens. Are any of you going to be involved in the construction of this project when it goes underway?
Absolutely.
I've got a couple of questions as a result of your presentation. Could—is someone operating the slides, so we can go through a couple of slides? Because I've got questions on particular slides.
Which slide would you like?
I don't know, because they're not numbered. Okay, so, people in the audience and yourselves, do you know what you're looking at here? How many batteries are in that box? In the box, how many batteries are in there?
Total number of rack cells? Or what do you want? What's number?
In that rack, how many?
So, you have—so, each rack has 10 modules, every—and then you have—I'm sorry, you have eight modules, and then you have 10 racks, so you have 80 modules.
How many, 80?
80.
Eight.
Eight. Eight per rack, and then you have 10 racks per container, so that's 80 modules.
In all, on the site?
Yeah, no, sir. No, so that's just in one container.
One container. So, how many—how many modules do you have on the site in total?
Roughly 2,400? You got 300, it's 300. Roughly 2,500. It's 325-megawatt site, each one of those containers is 1 megawatt, so roughly 325 times 80.
325 times 8.
80.
Well, there you go. Can—I see the site plan, please? So, one question was asked, where do construction people park? And so, I don't see any area where construction people would park when you're excavating for ground conduits, concrete pads, traversing of concrete trucks in and out, electrical trucks. I don't see where the parking would take place. Oh, somebody said there's a 25-foot setback. 25 feet is about from me to that desk. That's what 25 feet is, which is not much. So, we have several fire departments in the area, but the primary one is—do you know where the primary fire department is for this facility?
No, sir, not yet. No, sir, not yet. We haven't been introduced to them yet, but we will be.
Okay. In your last report, you said that you would meet with them before you submitted to the State Siting Council.
No, sir, I was not here on the previous meeting. I could not account for that.
That was in March? It's in the paper, it's in—the document that you all have. Now, you've mentioned a bunch of UL standards in your report. Is there anyone here who have asked us the UL standards? I don't think so, because you have to subscribe to UL, and it costs a lot of money. So, you give us references here, but we don't know what you're talking about.
What was the question? I'm sorry. The UL 9548 standards that these—that the equipment has to go through, the destructive testing? That is—that is public record, and we can get that for you. That's not a problem. This is more of a 30,000-foot view, but I mean, we can—we can absolutely supply that information.
So, it's a 30,000-foot view, you say?
Yes, sir. I mean, in my opinion, this is the 30,000-foot view.
Okay. So, what level of view does ISO New England have that you have already obtained approval for this project?
Already obtained approval for what?
ISO New England has approved—you have a contract with ISO New England.
That's not my department. I'm going to step back and let somebody else fill that question.
It's not clear where you're—where you're going with this.
It's not clear? I'm asking questions. You have a contract with ISO New England to provide this power.
Yes, there's a capacity supply obligation to deliver. Yes, there is. It's—it's not referred to as a contract, but there is an obligation to deliver power to ISO New England, yes.
So, you already have this project half-approved, or maybe three-quarters approved, as you're submitting this? Oh, do you know where the NTE—the NTE contract is, where the—where the—where the permit is? Do you know who actually has it?
I'm sorry, I don't.
You referenced that you need to have in your hands, or NTE somehow, which is no longer in existence, provide the permit that they have for the site. Do you know where that permit is right now?
Oh, NTE, no.
Are you talking about the Siting Council certificate?
I'm talking about NTE Siting Council certificate.
Right. That—it's still pending. It has an expiration date of September 2026, and that's the issue we discussed earlier about the Siting Council wanting to resolve that issue before they move forward with the particulars of this application.
How are you going to resolve it?
We're going to file a motion asking the Siting Council to take the evidence that we've submitted in the record already as part of the application and make a determination that the certificate is no longer valid.
The certificate is in the hands of a certain individual. Do you know who that is?
The certificate is in—the name of NTE Connecticut LLC.
It is not.
That's what the Siting Council records indicate.
I know where that certificate is, and you're standing here saying that—you're telling people that you're professionals, and you're going to do everything right, and you're going to keep this community safe, but you don't know where that certificate is. You can find it online. It's not what you're saying. It's not where you're saying it is. And I'm not going to tell you where it is.
John, can you take a minute for wetlands people want to leave? Is there any questions here pertinent for the Wetlands Commission?
Yeah, we were wondering if anyone had any comments that would pertain to wetlands, because I know that P&amp;Z has a lot more issues here, so we wanted to make sure that we had anything on the record, and then we could adjourn so that P&amp;Z could focus on things a little more. So, did anyone have any public comments regarding the wetlands aspect of this application?
Yes. Can you show the slide that shows the aerial view that shows the wetlands, please? All right, so the wetlands, and we didn't have a pointer, so I couldn't tell what people were talking about, but I believe that the wetlands are contained within that green line?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Are you comfortable that that's a reasonable distance, protects the environment?
Everything is regulated in Connecticut with—there's a 200-foot Upland Review Area, so we—we—if it was a normal application, and what we will do is, on our December meeting, on December 2nd, we would review this just like it was an application coming to us, and then we would make those comments to the Siting Council rather than to the applicant. So, anything that's within 200 feet is reviewed. We have certain things that we typically say 100-foot setback or whatever, but everything within the 200 feet is reviewed. So, there's several areas there that would—would fall into that area.
Now, I noticed that none of these slides show the juxtaposition of Alexander's Lake. Can we go back to the perspective, please? The artistic rendering?
I'm sorry, which slide?
On the slide? The 3,000-foot elevation, please. That one there. Does anybody know where Alexander's Lake is on that slide? Does anybody know where Alexander's Lake is on that slide?
So, yeah, so bear in mind that this is just a rendering, but you can see the industrial buildings, and it's at a funny angle, so it's a little bit skewed-looking, but the road off to the right is intended to depict the access road off of Lake Road. You can see the buildings further to the right, and Alexander Lake would be further to the right behind that.
I'm sorry if I contradict you. The building that you see, the last building that you see, going right to left, the building on the left, Alexander's Lake is about 50 feet from that building, going to the left, and Alexander's Lake is not south of this project, it is east of this project. And there are four—over 400 people that live there.
So, Bob, I think—I think I have to be reminded here that it's—we're only going to be given recommendations to the Siting Council, so the actual argument for the Siting Council, for the project, really need to be taken up with the Siting Council. So, and I think they—they have public hearings, right?
They'll have one—they'll have one public hearing.
I'm sorry?
They'll have one public hearing.
Yeah, so you—the opportunity to speak, when you're speaking against the project, might be where—except that we can't really address, I don't believe. We—as the Siting Council, basically, we're gathering information so that we can look out for the town's best interest at the Siting Council. We just don't have to be present, I don't think. We'll send it in a letter form.
I'll be there.
From the commission in the town. So, I'm just trying to make my point to you that some stuff that you're bringing up really isn't something that we—maybe the attorney can explain it better, but I don't think it's something that we handle at this level.
I'm completely familiar with the regs, okay? And I'll be there at that hearing. Two things.
And wetlands, as I said, December 2nd, we will go through everything that's here. That's why we wanted any comments that anyone had that pertain to the wetlands issues, and we will review it just like we would any application that we would have the opportunity to either approve or decline, and we would send the recommendations and the comments accordingly to the Siting Council.
And I applaud your being here. I have two more questions, and then I'm done. You talked about sound emissions, 51 decibels. Do you do any testing for low-frequency sound? I take it's no, but what I recommend is zoning is that you— I take it's no, but what I recommend to zoning is that you look into a regulation that deals with low-frequency sound. When you have these big motors, these big fans, when they start up, they go whoop, whoop, whoop. That's low-frequency sound, and you're gonna have a gazillion of them in this site. So although you might not hear it, low-frequency sound stops the brain from processing at night. Hitler was looking into using low-frequency sound as a war weapon. I brought this up before in other places, but it's time that we knew what low-frequency sound does to the human people in their habitats. And the last thing I have is, every time they miss a submittal, the technical reason that they got refused on the last submittal is because they forgot to talk with someone, okay? They forgot to talk with someone. There are two more people in town you need to talk with. I'm not gonna tell you who, but you're missing them also. And every time they get bumped out, they get an extension of time. We don't get an extension of time, but they get it. Every time they make a mistake, they get a time extension. How about that? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ed Grandowski, I don't know, I think this might apply to your wetlands comment. If there is thermal runaway, and the fire department goes in, reading through the document, there's something to the effect that they can hook up to the units somehow. I don't know what page it was on, but reading through it, they can hook up water to the units. So what you're telling me is all these containers have a containment to collect the glycol. But you guys are 1,000 miles away. The fire department is on site. You guys say you're gonna train these people. Well, if they get on there and they dump a pile of water on this thing, I don't see a containment structure to contain the water before it goes into your wetlands. The other thing, talking about public safety, nobody got a copy of these documents. It was like pulling teeth to get extra copies of the documents. The fire chief, who has control of the site, never got a copy of this document to review. So you want input tonight from something, but you don't even give the people who are supposed to be part of this... A lot of these people, they're looking at some of this stuff, but the poor guys, the first responders, they're left out of the whole equation. And that's the biggest part of all of this stuff. The first responders, if there's emissions, oh, the emission is gonna be this. If it's thermal runaway, we have all these controls, but you guys are 1,000 miles away. What happens? Vietka brought up about snow. Fire apparatus has to get into the site. How are they gonna get in? How far are they gonna have to drag a hole or whatever to get to these sites? I mean, these poor people are... That's where I'm getting at. You didn't address any of this. You didn't bring them to the table to give them, you know... Everybody here is invited, but the fire department, I don't know if anybody's here from the fire department, but they weren't even notified that this was going on. And I'm kinda like at odds that... It's like the handicap at the door, this is where I'm at. Nobody pays attention to the people who really need the information to make the comments. They're not invited to attend.
And just so you're aware, if you didn't see it in the application, WEC has committed that as part of the oversight contract, they will identify somebody local who has the opportunity to get here much more quickly than the folks in North Carolina. And that's a pretty common... That's a pretty common thing. There are people who conduct those kinds of responses, and that is a commitment that WEC has made as well.
Your... Excuse me. Your concern about the containment is noted, and I did bring that up. So again, I will... When we review this at our December meeting, we will take that into consideration.
Okay, I don't have anything for the wetlands if they wanna go, or should I just do my comment? So I just wanted to say a few things from the other public meeting to bring you guys to awareness. Most of them have been mentioned. I had a great concern that it wasn't manned. I liked Mike's idea about more cameras. I'd like to see a recommendation to the Siting Council that we have a once-a-week walkthrough, at the very least. I prefer once a day. If you ask about the maintenance, they say once a month they have a walkthrough. And then the things in South Carolina, I had... For the other meetings, I had big, long talks about... To them about running a facility and getting alarms myself all the time, and that the computer system will be lying about what's actually happening. We have a saying in wastewater, "Look with your eyes, skate a lies." So I'd like to see a walkthrough, a recommendation for a walkthrough. It's in a residential area, too, like that was people's big concern, like how are you putting an industry thing in a residential... Sound, you mentioned. The fire, it's just like a house fire, and it's gonna burn, and there's gonna be no evacuations. I mean, if that's not the case, heads are really gonna roll, you know? I'm not sure what your recommendation would be for that, but it's an idea. No, I don't mean what causes it or what level. I mean, as planning and zoning, I'm not sure what your recommendation would be to make sure that that's real. The last thing I'll say is that we, Town Council, so now I'm speaking as Town Council just for a minute. You know, we applied for intervenor status, and it sounds like you don't have intervenor status from what Jonathan said on your own, so please bring your... Any input to us before that meeting, if you wanted us to say, "There's a concern here", blah, 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 and we'll raise the concern as intervenors. So, thank you.
Do we have any more wetlands comments? Because we have a couple of our people... I'll lose the quorum real fast on you. And make sure, anyone that has any other comments, we are gonna be reviewing this on December 2nd, and we certainly are looking for input. Get it to us through Jonathan. He always makes sure that we have everything available, and we certainly appreciate what we've heard this evening.
Yes.
Because I think some of it mirrored some of the concerns that we were already having. So in that case, I think we're looking for a motion.
Motion to adjourn the special meeting.
Motion's made and seconded to adjourn the special meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
And thank you for your input, very much.
Thank you.
And thanks for having us.
You're welcome. Sorry we didn't provide coffee and doughnuts, but...
So we're still on the planning and zoning meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, when it came to noise, you guys were talking about it complied with the standards at property boundaries. What is the standard? This is a residential zone, pretty much with residential. So this should have a residential standard, not an industrial standard. And again, it's, you know...
So based on residential standards for an industrial source, which this will be if it is approved, 51 decibels is what's required during the nighttime, and so...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Whoa, whoa, timeout. This is all residential. We're throwing this on people. I don't agree, you know, maybe I'm gonna... I'll go to fight against that, that to say, you can put an industrial standard in a residential zone just because?
It is the residential standard.
Okay, if it is, I wanna make sure that if it's a residential... But it just says, it doesn't say anything here, residential, it meets a standard, it can meet the highest noise standard. There's a lot of stuff missing in the interpretation, and unless you're versed in every aspect of every engineering designation, it's very difficult to say if someone's in compliance. And then, you know, again, something about... I heard something to say about a two-to-three-week burn. If there's emissions and that, I mean, you should be putting up air monitors. And then somewhere, I can't remember where, and it says, "The benefit to the community." Well, if we're looking for a benefit to... Maybe you should take that verbiage out of this, because is it a benefit? Then if it's a benefit for the community, why are you fighting us tooth and nail on this? Yeah, I'm not against this project, but the more I see what's going on, everybody's playing games, you know, I might get that way.
I just wanna echo something Ed Grandowski said in regards to the noise ordinance. In Killenly, to my knowledge, our ordinances don't allow for industrial sources on parcels that are zoned residential. So by our ordinances, this is a residential parcel. So our ordinances would say that this should abide by a residential emitter abutting a residential property, because our ordinances don't allow for industrial emitters on residential property.
So your noise ordinance doesn't speak to whether a certain source is allowed. You have, of course, other committees and boards that speak to what is appropriate for zoning, but in this instance, because the project is under the jurisdiction of the Connecticut Siting Council, that decision, taking the input from the town, will be made by the council as to whether this is an appropriate use at that site. Whatever the use is at the site, it will, you know, the use will be an industrial use, and the Siting Council traditionally considers that designating that property as such is the appropriate standard. And so the 51 decibel at nighttime is what is required for an industrial source that abuts residential property, which this property does on all its sides.
Now, with the existing Siting Council certificate, did the Siting Council deem that they were going to change the zoning on this parcel to industrial? Or was the actual zoning of the parcel gonna stay residential?
The Siting Council doesn't, through any of its decisions, change the underlying zoning district of any parcel. The use is the use, and I think that's the issue that Lynn was referring to, but the Siting Council, to answer your direct question, doesn't change the zoning of a parcel through any of its decisions.
Any application, I believe it was Appendix A, I believe it's on page three. You list all of the Killenly officials that were notified, and I'll read off the list. Mary Calorio, Town Manager. Elizabeth Wilson, Town Clerk. Keith Florelo, Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Sandy Eggers, Chair of Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission. Donna Bromwell, Chair of the Conservation Commission. And Anne Marie Aubrey, Director of Planning and Development. Those, in your application, you're saying those are the officials that were notified?
Yes.
Okay. Did you notify any other officials directly?
No, the notification requirements are spelled out pretty clearly in the Siting Council statutes, and those are the ones that we followed.
So you're saying you followed the state statutes regarding Siting Council applications?
Yes.
Okay.
May, just a couple points of information. State Siting Council regulations allow for you all to impose what you feel you want to impose on that site. You can write the regulations as you see important to the community. They can contest it, but the regulations allow you to do that. The second thing is that the regulations also say, in this case, that the community can make recommendations for other sites. So think about that. Thank you.
And in your document, I don't know how many times you say, "This site abuts the existing industrial park." Probably, I don't know, five times? It does not abut the industrial park. There's residences, you know, you look at where our industrial... The Killenly Industrial Park is quite a bit to the east, and I had the last time I had the zoning map, if you show that, there is parcels on the zoning map that shows multiple parcels between the Killenly Industrial Park and your site. So this is kinda misleading information, and of course, the Siting Council, if they see that, okay, oh, it abuts, kinda goes in that favor, but it really doesn't. So you guys didn't do all your homework, and it's kinda tough... Again, I'm gonna say, we're volunteers, but if we took everything that the professionals gave us, we'd be in deep. And I'm not saying what.
Okay. Could I ask? Any more from the commissions here? Anybody else here for staff? Want any more comments? The applicant have any more comments you'd like to say?
No, I just, again, wanna thank the both commissions for their time tonight. Appreciate the folks coming out. Happy to answer any other questions you may have. If you think of something after this, you wanna pose some additional questions, we can get written responses back to the commission prior to your final decision, if that would be helpful.
All right. You've been... You've downed this road once before, and you put together a pretty comprehensive, you know, set of orders after going through your zoning regulations. So it seems as though you've given an opportunity to... For folks to comment. I think last time you didn't, so you're more accommodating that way. But now, you gotta get to the business of looking at your zoning regulations in this project and make an order that gets recorded in the land records. And it is an unusual process. It takes it out of the ordinary planning and zoning process. So as was just mentioned, in the course of this, if there was some additional information that was required, we can ask council for the applicant to provide additional information if you think it's necessary to help you in craft your order. So it seems as though you should get on to the next step from where I'm sitting.
All right, well, thank you all. I think we don't need a motion or a vote or anything to cut this down, right?
Just the ordinary motion, you know, however you end your normal meetings.
So we're just gonna take a... No, we got... Yeah, we're gonna take a 10-minute break here, and then come back. Or 15 minutes. What do you want? Five? Well, somebody asked for 20, so I thought I was putting the difference before, yeah.
Unofficially, the time is 9:10, so it'd be 9:15 when we're gonna...
That's fine.
Okay.
Just get a break here.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.